All order.
High pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll public comment, I see.
Agenda, everybody will give the agenda?
In promotion, we improve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
All favor? Consent agenda, any questions on?
I, I do have a question, go for it. On the, um. What is that, the CAM?
Yeah, so in your packet, it's the first, first thing, you had consensus to send it?
No, like, like, my question is. I read that you're gonna charge, uh, cost allocation of a thousand dollars. How come the, uh, the veterans pay seventeen thousand eight hundred and five?
No, this is direct cost. Cost allocation is indirect costs, so these, this is, this is the heating, electric, internet. Uh, and liability based on the square footage of just the room.
And actually, we took the house of, actually Becky's last year, but we got the dollar multiple.
That's what we would charge them directly. Indirect costs would be, um, all the functions that this. Treasury, the clerk's office, any other departments. The cost to the county indirectly for operating. Issuing checks, taking the grant, money from the treasury department, there's a whole formula that goes into. Uh, calculating the indirect costs. They would not be subject to it because they're an outside entity, they're not a department. It's like.
CAM would be outside?
Well, yeah, they're their own entity, and they're not a county department. Well, it'd be like health department, it'd be like U S P, right?
Yeah, the health department ain't within the building.
Yeah, maybe like the state police.
But if we want them here, we, we're trying to get a representative of CAM in Elgin County. That's always been their hang up that they can't find a place for them. So, so, well, we have a place, then now they, this grant, there's four hundred thousand dollars. That has eighteen, eighteen percent administrative fee. So we're right there, pays for a full-time person, and we can find a spot for you. You pay for your own heat, light stuff, anyway, we have an empty room, we want representation in Elgin County for Elgin, you know, people. In Elgin County to see, and they can go like Joel said. Be able to come to these meetings and township meetings to see what.
The needs and.
The needs for Elgin County.
Well, still. There's no difference there than the veterans. Veterans help people out.
Yeah.
They, oh my god, that's, that's seventeen times more.
We pay for the veterans. There, she's actually a.
Is that the wrong number I, I've got here or no? I, I got down there, there, this is on their, um, um. Their, uh. Budget. I got a white line, or a yellow line?
Was it eight two eight or?
Just says cost allocation.
Eight two eight, yeah.
Yeah, so that's gonna be both of them combined, right, so we can't charge the two nine four, well, also those are combined, we take the state grant. And since they can't pay cost allocation, we charge the two nine three, so they have multiple villages, right, so there's. Again, those things that go into the formula, there's the collection of the village money, there's, uh, when your employee adds quite a bit too, because.
That's like ninety percent of it, isn't it?
If, in, in. And the department and multiple villages, they, they have a whole formula process, I mean, I'd have to put you in contact with Maximus about how they run those numbers. But that's every year when paying that cost allocation preparation, that's the company that takes out these numbers, and sometimes ambulance. Doesn't like the number and some.
Nobody likes.
Nobody likes.
Is the retirement of the employee.
Or, it, it.
It's hard to say what, what the cost.
Everything. What's making up the bulk of those costs, we went through it with Joe Silk with billing codes. And I think that's one of the reasons that we got away from using MGT. Because it was always a bitter dispute between the way that that is, that is calculated, so. I, I can't answer the specific questions for it, because again, it's, it's a, it's a company that does that, that specializes in doing it. And you'd have to speak to them directly about how they come up with that number right there. I don't know, I can't answer the question.
Can you find me that? Because I don't, I don't think that's very damn fair.
Yeah, I can tell you, uh, that, if you can come in our house, we can call them together, we've had that conversation.
EMS is up at two hundred and sixty thousand, Nick.
Who does?
EMS, cost allocation.
Cost allocation.
And it just goes up and up and up, so we went down that same road with clerk's office, Tina about had a fit, along, you know, everybody else, it was explained, it is a company. That, you know, they kind of come up with that figure, it's not very easy to understand.
Well, who come up with the figure of a thousand?
No, that's direct cost, that's how much that building, based on the square footage of that one room. How much the heating and the electricity was, I mean, that's just based on square footage and liability. The internet is just one sixteenth of whatever the, you know, monthly bill is, we split it between every. Everyone that has internet, so it's like a hundred and eight dollars a month, split by fifteen.
So, you're wondering in comparison, what is the CAM's indirect amount of money?
Yeah, indirect costs would be a different thing, if we're gonna start charging them indirect costs and run them through the cost allocation, then that's gonna be. A-again, this is just an initial letter.
That we.
Of intent to get an employee in here, and then during the negotiating process, if we have a proper understanding, that's something we conclude in there and say. Well, the, the board would like to proceed, but we would need to include you in the cost allocation process.
But the indirect costs would be almost minimal, because they're not an employee of Elgin County.
I don't, yeah, I don't know, we couldn't, we couldn't know what that is until.
Indirect.
Had the.
Costs come from. Big, the retirement and everything else.
I mean, should just.
Is airports like eight grand this year? I think, seven or eight?
Yeah, and there's a lot of factors that go into it, previous years, so.
You know, every time I have.
Two years back.
Yeah, cherry order something, well, that's taking time, you know.
Becky said.
But that's only by.
A county employee, is she?
Yes, she.
Oh, she is.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry. Yeah, Becky is coming.
Yeah, she pulls.
Both, we, we supply insurance and.
That's state, that's, so again, so that's, that's, that's a good point, so the two nine four, the state grant, that fifty thousand that we get. That pays for her.
Fifty one thousand there.
Yeah, actually, I think it's fifty three or fifty four even this year. They, they won't pay cost allocation, but we pay her extra hours and benefits come out of there. So, they won't pay the cost allocation that is. Uh, of, the, the, of a big portion of that chunk that you're talking about right there, that is calculated in that formula, is based on. The presumed work and the extra things that go into her payroll and her benefits, which come out of the two nine four. But the state doesn't pay for it, so we move that to the two nine three, so the two nine three has the, the. The county allocated village, there's the county voted village, and then she has the two nine four, so everything is lumped into that one number that you're looking at. Instead of being split between two funds, because the state won't pay. But I need to explain why so much as in one.
I think I think I'm in the top, yeah. But, uh, we, we also have the, uh, Veterans Trust Fund.
I, I have to think of interim numbers, because everybody calls them, there's Michigan State Veterans Fund, and then there's the County Village, and I, I see them as. The two nine three and the two nine four, and I think you were talking about the two nine four.
Oh, that's a whole different one. There's a whole different, uh, uh, guys that sit on that board.
Yeah, so that's the, the, the counted allocated, two nine three, that's that point where every year in September, you go to, to collect it, the, the point one. That's the county allocated. Yeah, so the two nine three, so that's the one that's picking up the cost application.
You're in the mud now for me. We, but I just wondered why one is a thousand dollars and one is seventeen thousand eight hundred.
Yeah, and this too, that indirect cost, and this letter is only an intent. This will go to them, there, it's gonna be a back and forth, this board has to vote again for this whole thing to go through.
I know that.
Okay.
But it is even close to what they're, with the veteran are paying.
Yeah, and if.
Anyway, I'll talk.
If it, if it comes back and, and they say, yeah, we can get a full-time person in here, um, and they, they agree to pay one thousand dollars of indirect costs, or up to three thousand, who knows? Maybe they say, you know, there's a, there's a certain amount they'll pay for, and we run through Maximus, and Maximus says, well. Whenever they kick out, they say it's gonna be six thousand dollars. They may not agree with, they may not sign it. Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a back and forth.
The only thing we, we knew for sure, without getting too many people involved, what their direct costs were gonna be, and that's, we put that, so that's covered. The indirect, that's Becky's, a bunch of that allocation is for her retirement.
Or processing of checks.
Yeah, very.
Moving money back and forth between the funds and the, there's just, but I'm not gonna.
It's a creeping thick report every year that the Maximus gives us.
And they're all different, based on what services are provided by, for each. Department, grant and fund. There's pie sheets involved, there's all kinds of things that go into it, so. I don't want to expect you, I won't put a number on it, because I have no idea. You know, but then, we can call them.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah, but we.
Uh, thank you.
But this is, again, it's just a letter of intent, this is just the, the ball roll.
Okay.
We're not committing any.
Any other questions?
I'll second that.
Mr. Caprosa? Yes, Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Mr. Rondo?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Somebody's calling business.
Everybody have a chance to look at the minutes? March tenth, March seventeenth. Two on March seventeenth.
One's pretty short.
Other, well, two was short. The seventeen was short, over the other.
I didn't see any mistakes. Did you get a motion on that? Move to approve the minutes.
Call sport.
Roll call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Milton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Hey, General Counsel. So we're done on that.
So it's gonna be the same as it was before. And then any. Uh, bids that come in, we can just.
I looked it over, I set time aside, Joel asked me for it last week around Wednesday or Thursday, and I said I hadn't looked at it. I'll set some time aside this weekend, expecting to redraft something or draft something from scratch, and that was unnecessary, it was perfect. So I sent some suggestions as to where would you publish it. But it's good.
Any questions on that?
Motion to approve them?
So moved? Roll call.
Mr. Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes, number nine. U-PAC Conference.
I think it's.
I bow out.
Yeah, me and Mickey are going to go on.
I may, I may be able to get there. I don't, I'm not worried about getting a room. I'd sleep in my car, like, no. Uh, but, uh.
You'll fall asleep at the. Check.
Yeah.
No idea, I'm a man, maybe, I won't even vote, I won't get on and enjoy life.
You already approved up to four in the consent agenda, so.
Okay.
About me and where do you go, and I can just.
Book three for now.
Yeah, you don't need to even.
Not to make any motion or anything.
You don't need a room, but you just wanna go both days.
Yeah, well, I'll say the name and which isn't too far away.
Okay. Thirty miles or something.
I guess we can, then number ten, deploy technology Wi-Fi access points, times two. Seventeen hundred bucks, sixteen hundred ninety-five forty cents. Now, where were those two gonna be? One here, and one upstairs, hallway, hallway.
Upstairs, upstairs.
Oh, conservation space.
That's their Wi-Fi, yes.
Yeah. Same here.
They're prepared to do theirs, play pay rent.
Yeah. Any questions on the Wi-Fi?
I'll support it. Make you need a, you make a motion?
Yeah. What did I say?
You'll support it.
I was making it, and you said support, so you.
Yeah, so Kelly made the motion, Mickey supported.
A roll call.
But it's to come from capital approvals? Mr. Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes. Number eleven, MMRMA distribution. What's your plans on that?
Couple more days like today, and I think we're good. Couple more days like today, and I think. You go.
It was you farting up down to pull a figure?
Yeah, so, and this would just be to move it, and then we can. The committee is gonna get paid. Together and come up with a plan, but this would just be to pull it out and.
So it's the right time to pull it out right now, is it gonna go for down?
Just moving it from one fund.
All to our funds. Yeah, right, it doesn't matter, it doesn't.
It does, but it's.
Like a separate, a set very whole percentage probably, like everything else at the.
It's a just. Yeah, we don't wanna sit on it forever. It can take a couple weeks, a couple months. Figure it out.
I like to make the motion that we, uh. See, all five hundred thousand?
Maybe you can, whatever you want, but. That keeps them.
Like, that's kind of like, uh, that should be. I think that, like, what would Pam say, what, what amount would be a good amount?
I ran that by her, she wasn't agreed with that one.
Five hundred?
Yeah.
I'll make motions, and five hundred, though.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Milton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yeah.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes. Number twelve, Pathways Mental Health Corporation. April to June twenty-five, or two thousand three hundred and five dollars. Hey, Pathways, their appropriation for April or June.
Can I ask you a question back on all of them?
Yep.
What does MMRMA stand for?
Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority.
Risk, risk management.
Risk management, uh.
Thank you.
Acronyms everywhere, authority.
Back, Paul, roll call, I think that a motion.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Good.
Commissioner Milton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes, number thirteen, unfinished business.
Pick a name. We, we need to do something so we can get it moving forward, so.
I ran my name past a few people, and they thought it sounded pretty good, but.
I'll, I'll save you a couple of.
It's changed, it's changed.
Oh, you, you got another fresh idea?
Nope, not really a fresh idea.
What you got for us?
But, um, the prosecutor is gonna look into some legalities. As far as what we have to provide and what we don't have to provide, and then let's go from there, so let's let him. Look at some of his stuff before we decide making decisions, because there's some other stuff that's come about.
And, yeah, but we have, we're exploring things behind the scenes to, uh, make sure that we're operating in compliance with the law. And that may is going to affect what you wanna call this thing.
May six?
May.
I've also contacted the state veterinarian, the new one, um, okay. So I'm waiting to hear back from her, and we'll compile what she has to say with what prosecutor finds out with those findings, and then we can have a. More clear definition of what we should and shouldn't do.
That I have no more highs than I have no old business for tonight.
The May six meetings? But then we can.
Oh, yes, I'm just adding to my tally.
Will you be able to be here May six meeting?
Yes, you guys are gonna have a new lawyer by then, bro.
No, because that's the committee.
Oh, that's the committee?
Oh, and that, the deadline for that was not even till, uh.
Yeah, we won't have anyone yet. Might be able to discuss a couple options.
Yeah.
It would be nice if there was a few options.
Have a direction, yeah.
Joke, you should be accounted about.
Resolutions, A. For medical examiner. After talking with. Doctor Stockman, who's actually owns the company. He's not sure if Doctor Khan is gonna continue or not, so he asked that we. Switch the two of them, make him the chief medical examiner, and Doctor Khan, there's the deputy, so. From a technical legal standpoint, it's fine, because Doctor Stockman is the pathologist, so they're still employing a pathologist for us. So, just the technicality of switching the two of them, so that Doctor Khan does separate from him, we don't have to come back and. Try appoint a new medical examiner in a rush.
This came up at our chief's meeting as well, and, um, I think we're seeing a lack of confidence from law enforcement. In the current medical examiner, and I suggest as the chief law enforcement official that we seek alternative, it's.
And we're also working behind the scenes to resolve that. Personally, I don't have a whole lot of confidence left in what's been going on, but they have not. As of yet, they have not breached their contract with us, so. I know Marquette has basically bought them out of them, of ninety days of their contract, Marquette has ceased using their services. And switched to another.
If, yes, and I think I would recommend I take a similar course of action.
We're definitely exploring those options.
We have to find somebody else. Over, to be able to get over.
Yeah.
Somebody's better than nobody. But we gotta find somebody, right?
Yeah, we are, uh, working hard at, at, we, we, another company reached out to me just on Friday too, so.
Excellent, thank you for working on this.
I, I don't know that they're gonna be the right answer either, to be honest, but. I know we did have a discussion too, we're gonna bring up at our health department meeting, we have a. Who's our chief, uh, medical guy at the health department?
Doctor Boney.
Boney?
That his name?
The young guy?
Yeah, something like that.
You know, why?
It ain't carrying any.
But that's, no, he's the. This is a four county thing, maybe that would be a good. For all counties together, if it was right into the health department.
That's a good idea.
So, we'll, uh, look at that aspect too, not seeing anything to come out of it, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
I think Marquette's already locked in theirs.
Yes, Marquette is locked in, and there's, they've locked in with.
It's sad, because when the, they have their doctors at the, the company that we currently contracted with, they, they were good, they were really good. And I, I have one on a case right now, a murder case, and, um, I, I asked him, I said, can you? Be the medical examiner for all of our cases, he said, I don't think your, your board wants to pay me from, come up from Detroit. Do that, I was like, yeah, you're probably right, but it's not working out.
Yeah.
Uh, anybody got a motion?
I'll move that we. Appoint Doctor David Stockman as the chief medical examiner for Elgin County, and Doctor Ali Khan as the deputy.
Roll call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
And have you got any committee reports last week?
I was at, at North Care, um. Meeting and, um. They are continuing with their two hundred and fifty dollar. Uh, per high school wants to have alcohol-free graduation parties. Um, and, uh, they don't, they donate two hundred and fifty dollars to the schools. That, uh. Submit an application or call and contact them. That should be bring to.
They have to apply for that grant?
Uh, yeah, I don't think it's a grant, I think they have the money, it's just.
It'll, that should be contacted to the school. Like, I should tell them. Afterwards, I'll get the information, I'll get to, I'll, I'll see if they. I'll go to my sister-in-law. Well, but, yeah, it's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, you have to go rescue the Mustang, it's out in the bay. You guys need, uh, some rescue practice. I hear it's out in the, the horse Mustang.
When's supposed to switch?
No, they had it to a, one of the islands, and it came out of the water.
Right.
Wow.
They just posted it a little bit ago, and I was like, hey, you guys need some rescue? You need to go test something, go rescue the Mustang.
They called for warning.
Especially, I mean, even, uh, in, in intermediate school, you know, that, uh. You know, they have stimulant addictions, uh, stimulant breakage. Maryland.
All schools, no, I've got Superior Central, wonder if they'd be interested in that too, is that golden?
Yeah, um.
Grand Ray Schools?
Yep.
I'm just trying to think, Grand Ray Schools. How do we get ahold of them to let them know that?
Uh, I'm going down there tomorrow morning.
Okay, like, I'll get the stuff and get it to New Sees Schools. Oh. Give it to, uh.
Huh?
Dyer. Yeah, we have a school officer that goes to all of them, so. Yeah, the information, we give it to Blake, and Blake can give it to Dyer, and get that shipped all wrong.
Right. Roll call, do I, can I get some email addresses for you guys, and I'll just.
David should be.
I'll just give it, send you the email.
All right.
I had to do it, I'm speed dial.
That's it. Yeah, we'll get it to them.
Pop open your company email to the search, they're typing the name.
Yeah, hopefully they'll be fine right now.
Uh, not a, didn't have a committee meeting yet, but, uh, actually, a gentleman was ringing my phone, a gentleman from Marquette reached out to me. Last week, the Canadian company that the US Geological Survey pays, that many of you probably saw a picture of the other day on Facebook. The helicopter with the big wonky, looks like Meg different underneath it.
Yeah.
Maybe looking to, for a little bit of space this summer to base some of their gear handling. Like, even like the antenna on stop nut, they would, they wouldn't keep the helicopter there, but they would keep like their fuel truck for during the, because apparently this summer. We're pretty much in the center of what they need, uh, do this summer, so. I'll call him later and find out what.
That's a federal thing, or? There's that independent contractor.
They're an independent contractor for the federal, for.
But still. For, for profit.
Yeah.
So we do gotta find out.
Yeah, so if they do, we're gonna have to sit down and figure out what.
We do gotta. Want the bylaw, sort of, through the airport committee to figure out what is rental or.
Well, and that's, I had kind of talked. Well, and that's, I had kinda talked with Joel. So far, even the two people that have asked about it, they're so different that I don't think a standard. Formula is gonna apply, cuz like these guys, they're not gonna actually keep an aircraft there, they're all they wanna keep is a fuel truck. And the antenna equipment they see hanging from the, you know, the other one wants to keep an aircraft there, so. I think we're gonna have to just kind of.
I know, but then we had one that used it for training or for sound checking, we have, you know, there's multiple things here at some point.
We're gonna have to sit down and. I think the more we do, I think then we can get a feel for where it should be.
You sure you want a fuel truck out there?
Oh, yeah, there, there's already been trailers with fuel out there, so that's no, they've they've got those, gotta pass some inspections and.
Yeah, but they're gonna.
Cuz they're self-contained, they bring their own fuels, they don't.
And then, did we ever get a thing for a permit that they can fill out to have?
I'm working on it.
Alright.
And the other people haven't reached back of the federal, the Forest Service hasn't, I haven't heard anything back from them yet, so. Soon if somebody's actually serious about it, then I'll bring it until we can figure out what we wanna. Do as far as fees and stuff for that kind of thing, cuz yeah, commercial uses, they need that. Oh, yeah, so.
Any other? I went to a recycling meeting. Three hours, I was never so bored. Kelly wants to take it back. Oh, my God.
Horrible.
Did they go around circles?
Another one in a month?
All on screen? Yeah. One after the, for the different drafts and it's.
Yeah.
Nobody there can really answer anything because it's.
It wastes time.
Oh, my, my. As far as I'm concerned. I I will go to the next one, Kelly gonna take a word after it, Kelly?
I'll be taking them back.
Oh, my God, so.
And then we, you got anything, Kelly?
No, but uh, this Friday is the two pad BD. That's Friday or the twenty, whatever it is, that's the regional one, so everybody goes at noon with lunch and I do have. I will go to that, I'll be at that one too.
And then we do have um, roll grants, they got a thing in Eldred County Thursday, May eighth. And at Parks and Recs. Um, I can't go cuz I'll be at the Escanaba, so I'm back.
What is it? Is it like all day or?
See, that the same as I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I said it to me. Actually, I enjoy going to the conference, I just don't know if it works good, or scheduling.
I will be in the building at that time. I'll be in the building at that time. This play group is from ten to twelve on Thursdays and then I can just have my friends scoop up Henry and I can. Stop in and.
We're thinking of bringing up Brownfield, snow's helping.
Yeah, remind, remind me, I'll try and go to that.
Yeah, see if they're saying things to a brownfield.
Or if they know.
Or if there's anything.
They know, yeah.
Right, cuz we just talked about making sure we get the word out there about brownfield programs. Correspondents, besides that.
Delta County Board of Commissioners notifying of their master plan uh update.
Collins, Kelly? Happy Easter?
No, happy Easter. We didn't really start a break.
And uh, yes, we did. And we put up to everybody, we had a luncheon.
No, I'm saying.
Again, I was on the uh. Uh, Mac website. There's a proposal to raise the gas tax to twenty cents a gallon.
I thought we were dropping the set, the gas tax.
This one here, they're raising.
They're fixing the roads.
To fix the roads.
Is that to get rid of the property tax, we'll raise the gas tax?
They really don't drop anything.
No.
And then I went looking for the veterans. They had big office signed veterans and there's a one cent was on the bottom. Both veterans, it was all about the gas tax, so.
Get, isn't the gas tax right now thirty-one cents a gallon?
That they're gonna raise it twenty cents.
Raise it two.
Twenty cents.
Yeah, raise it twenty cents.
That'll be a fifty cent gas tax.
Terrible. Don't bring her down a dollar and they bring her up twenty cents.
This one went down a dollar.
When did it go down a dollar?
No, I mean, this is the highest pass around. Well, except for Grand Ray.
Two ninety-nine at Marquette right now.
Yeah, I got two sixty-five over.
Good, I got eighty-five miles left, I'll wait till it fill up tomorrow in Marquette.
That's all I got.
I have something, I just can't remember, so. Mickey did remind me, when I was reading one of Mac's other updates, the main reintroduce bills in the House and Senate to try and get the. Uh, Revenue Sharing Trust Fund that didn't go through, that Senate just kinda sat on during the winged up. They've reintroduced bills bipartisan in the House and the Senate to try and get that established so that. Instead of have to wait every year to see what the state says we can have, we would go, so. Hopefully that. I I expect at some point at the last to start writing letters and stuff too, so. Comes down.
That comments, so.
This time. There's one thing, there was an incident last week where individuals in the courthouse created disturbance. And uh, we, one of the the board know that the judges are meeting on Wednesday to discuss what should be done. And they may be requesting action from you. So keep that in mind, but I'm confident that they can prepare.
On that same subject, a couple of employees have talked to me about it, I've reached out to the phone company. They're gonna look into a solution. Right now, the panic buttons are on the phones. And like in the particular office where it happened, the phone isn't right near the, anywhere near the window. And it's. They're working on a couple of solutions and one of them. Probably should work, it's very similar to what we use at the funeral home. Like if our door is locked, you lock it, there's an aircon button, there need to push, that actually is tied into our phone system and that rings the phone. And they think they could make that ring directly to that line and show up as an alternative, so it can be more readily available instead of having to.
Can I get that under my desk?
Yeah. Cuz I, I, I wrongly, I wrongly assumed that they still had buttons near each. Interaction point of the public.
So you gotta get through Kathleen to get to you.
I, I'm not, I'm the safest guy.
So, we should have, I should have some, if it's something we wanna look into by the time our committee meeting's rolled around, they should have a couple options for us, so.
Awesome, good.
And again, no more public comments. Cause there is no public, just to see that. They ever want to adjourn, you need to adjourn.
Why is May so busy for you? I, we've been speculating with this all week.